Welcome, everyone. I call the June 7, 2023 Planning Commission Meeting to order. The main purposes of tonight's meeting are a study session on the comprehensive plan transportation element and the conclusion of consideration of the middle housing comprehensive plan amendments. Before we move on to agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our hybrid meeting format. City of Bothell is providing the option to attend this meeting either in person or remotely via Zoom. For those participating via Zoom, the chat and question functions are not available for use to ensure compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. We have a public comment agenda item at the beginning of the meeting. This time is for comments on issues not on tonight's agenda. Please limit these comments to three minutes. We will be using the lights, correct? Which are up there. And they'll indicate your time. When a yellow light appears, you'll have about 20 seconds to conclude, and when the red light appears, please finish your comments. Please note that the City of Bothell does not tolerate verbal harassment, and please remember this during your comments. Public comment and hearing testimony will be allowed both in person and via Zoom. Those wishing to comment via Zoom were requested to submit an online form by 3:00 PM today. People wishing to submit written comments were also asked to submit those by 3:00 PM. Email was encouraged as well and will be acknowledged, and we did, in fact, receive some emails this afternoon. Those in attendance may also make comments, and it may ask to indicate their desire to comment on the sign-in sheets, which are over that way. The Imagine Bothell notice, the city website, and tonight's agenda all provide information to the public for providing comments. The video of this meeting will be streamed live, as well as recorded, and available for later viewing on the YouTube channel. A call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone and listen live to the meeting. For our phone-in callers, during staff presentation, staff will make every effort to specify which materials they're referencing so that everyone may follow along. At this point, we'll take a moment to acknowledge the attendance of the commissioners. Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Westerbeck?
Here.
Commissioner Kurd?
Here.
Commissioner Robson?
Here.
Commissioner Anders is not here at the moment. Commissioner Augustafson? In addition, Deputy Community Director Development -- Community Development Director, Ashley Winchell, Deputy Public Works Director, Steve Morikawa, Transportation Supervisor, Rayad Turini, and Senior Planner, Dave Boyd are attending. Lastly, before we begin, I'd like to reiterate some guidelines for all meeting attendees. Please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking. Mute your microphone when not speaking. If you are also streaming the live video feed, please turn the sound off, as there is a delay. And before I -- before we begin, I'd like to remind commenters that while you may speak to whatever topic you choose, we ask that if you are a council candidate, you do not use this time to speak to your own campaign. Each person is solely responsible for their own comments, but speaking about your own campaign could be a violation of campaign laws, which the Public Disclosure Commission would determine. And that's a new addition to our intro, so I ask you to consider that. For commissioners, at specific breaks in the presentation, I'll be calling on members who wish to speak or ask a question. If you want to speak, please indicate this by raising your hand, and I will call on you as I see you. This will help avoid the problem of having two people speaking at the same time. Identify yourself before you ask a question, make a motion, second a motion, or participate in debate. And please mute your microphone when not speaking. So the first item on the agenda is public comment. The city has accepted visitor comment in writing, as well as accepted signup sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to staff no later than 3:00 PM today were forwarded to all commissioners, and as I indicated, we did receive some, and they are part of the record. This time is for items not on tonight's agenda. Deputy Director Winchell, please let us know if there are any comments received.
All comments received prior to 3:00 PM have been forwarded to the commission, and then we do have people signed up. There's also participants via Zoom, and then just for the record, Commissioner Anders has logged on.
Ah, yes. I see there. Welcome, Commissioner Anders.
Thank you.
So our first item -- yes, so, public comment.
The first person signed up to speak is James Canniff.
Canniff.
Sorry?
Canniff. Good evening. I'm James Canniff. I live on 186, right over here. My concern at this point is 103rd Street, between 185th and 186. There's a stretch of road that's in front of the addition apartments that kind of kicks off this way, and it's too narrow for two cars to pass each other if there's cars parked on the side of this roads. It's a hazard if you're turning from way 85th and you're heading towards the addition apartments. And I just want to bring up as public comment that this area should be looked at to put in no parking on one side of the road on 103rd or -- but basically, right now, it's a danger to turn, and it's a danger for two cars to pass at the same time. So that street again is 103rd, and it's between 185th, which is right here by the police station, City Hall, and 186. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate you guys doing a great job. Have a good evening.
Thank you. You've got a few folks from transportation here, so I'm sure they heard you. Next.
Francesca Lyman. Thank you. Honorable members of the Bothell Planning Commission, I come to you as a Bothell resident representing many of my neighbors concerned for the safety of our community while enjoying the beauties of Bothell's newest park, the former Wayne Golf Course. For some time, traffic has been growing on Wayneed Away, aka 96th Avenue Northeast, along with speeds by drivers, especially buses and heavy trucks, with them often hitting 45 or 50 miles per hour in a 25 mile-per-hour zone. It used to be a very narrow, quiet country road. No more. It turns from a major arterial highway, SR 522, to a lane merging onto a blind corner. Is this on?
Yeah.
Okay. With limited sight distance, cars pass heavily-used access to parks and trails. Bicycles and pedestrians are making hurried crossings. Traffic moves well above posted speed limits, as said, some driving well over 40 miles per hour. But Wayneed Away is not an accident waiting to happen, too late to use the word "waiting." There have been at least two accidents in the last few years. One of them was a rear end with an infant in one of the cars, and another bicycle was struck by a car on 96th Avenue Bridge. And there was a third, a collision in front of the River Park and Riverbend. Is the City of Bothell going to wait for something far worse to occur before taking action? With summer upon us, we know that there are also many more people coming to visit Wayne. So there are more pedestrians, runners, cyclists, dog walkers, families with strollers and children entering the park, crossing the road and walking along the road on a very slim sidewalk on a limited stretch of road on one side. As mentioned, unfortunately, traffic has increased. Drivers frequently speed past this 25 mile-per-hour. Traffic counts appear to have shown a 20% to 30% increase. I've looked at the Kirkland traffic counts north of 145th, and the City of Bothell itself shows that 85% of drivers clock in at 37 miles per hour. There is currently a pedestrian-activated flashing light in crosswalk, and a nice pedestrian warning sign, but no such sign exists at the far more dangerous curve where 96th Avenue turns toward SR 522, passing the entrance of the Wayne Park parking lot and utility pipeline. Since our communities close to the park, Village of Riverbend, River Park, Piper's Glen, Bridlewood, et cetera, benefit so much from our access to the Burke-Gilman Trail and the walkability amenities offered by the local trails, seems to make sense that we take care of these hazards. This could be a real multimodal success story, as successful and beloved as our new Wayne Park. I'm passing along some quick snapshots as a way of serving as part of the city's eyes and ears. I hope you planners are willing to work with others to figure out an action plan for safety, and I hope you take an active role in improving the situation and maybe saving some lives. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Cliff Cawthorn.
Okay, there we go. Perfect. All right. Hello, commissioners. As some -- well, as many of you know, my name is Cliff Cawthon. I am -- okay. I am the Advocacy and Policy Manager for Habitat for Humanity of Seattle-King, Kier Tass County. And also, my apologies for that. So first of all, I want to thank you. I know that -- and I'm actually here to speak in support of the middle housing amendments. I know that there have been a lot of very tough conversations in the community about how the region is changing as a whole, and I want to applaud all of you for having those conversations and doing the due diligence in terms of outreach and really taking in voices from, you know, the broad swaths of the community. And I'm here in support of tonight's middle housing amendments because this is a really good step forward to addressing the housing crisis. That in order to address the housing crisis with rising costs, rising rents, the inability to be able to buy a home for many people in this community, as well as neighboring communities, that we're going to need duplexes, triplexes, townhomes, and other middle housing types that are more affordable to create, more affordable to build, and thus more affordable for people to be able to have a home. People like some of our members, like Rodney. He sometimes volunteers in our office, is one of the nicest guys you'll ever meet, and he's also a veteran. And I look at Rodney, and I think about our other homeowners, and I think to myself that because of the choices that this commission is making, and because of the conversations that leaders like yourself are having, that Rodney will be able to have a home. And in addition to that, as you know, through your own considerations, that this is also a chance to address the climate crisis, that these middle housing amendments will be a really small P progressive step forward in terms of addressing the climate crisis through preventing sprawl, through allowing us to build more compact and more low-to-moderate-density housing types to address the need for affordable housing, and also people can live in a high-opportunity area such as Bothell. So last but not least, that these middle housing amendments will also allow people to be able to take advantage of the growing transit capacity, jobs, and create more opportunities and allow more people to have a better standard of living. So thank you very much for your time. Thank you very much for your consideration of these amendments. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
The next person signed up to speak is Mark Swanson.
Is this on?
Yeah.
Very good. I worked a part-time job when I went to school at WSU, got to meet some of the people that worked there in the WSU Housing and Food Service. One of those guys was an elderly carpenter. He took me out to Idaho where we grabbed sockeye salmon with our bare hands and threw them in a cooler. We were breaking the law, but Ray said he was 50% Indian, so it was fine. Well, after about 45, 50 fish, I got kind of felt kind of moral hangover. I still have that moral hangover today. Maybe that's why I'm fighting for the salmon now. I don't know. Anyway, I looked at it, 900 miles from the mouth of the Columbia to central Idaho, where I was snagging those sockeye salmon. 900 miles. The Coho here in Bothell can hardly make it two city blocks before they expire due to tire dust pollution. I sent the science behind that to y'all. You should be able to see it in the Microsoft Word document that Ashley should have. So one thing I wanted to point out, people that are low-income, they can't use Metro. They can't. Metro is for people to go from point A to point B. It's not meant for single moms and people that are working part-time jobs. You got to work this part-time job, and you got to go to this part-time job, and you got to go pick up your kid, and then you got to get them to the babysitter, and you go back. Just ask some of the low-income people around here whether they can use Metro. They can't. It's a failed model. Now about metro buses. For every passenger mile in a metro bus, there's six times more tire dust pollution than on a family car. That's right. You have the math. It's simple. Tire dust is killing Coho salmon. 35% of the orca whales eat silver salmon. Bottom line is, metro buses is killing orcas. It's just the facts, people, and I sent you the science. Last thing, there is no housing crisis, with all due respect. Bothell is cheaper to rent a two-bedroom, one-bath apartment today than it was 25, 30 years ago. I lived through the Boeing layoffs, the dot-com bubble, and the recent hike. We've seen all kinds of failure in home prices. I've seen my neighborhood go to 30% vacancy. That's coming here, too. It's cyclical. The last thing is, you're forcing Bothell to grow at 50x over the next two years as the U.S. population growth rate.
Thank you.
50x, that's enough.
Thank you.
If there's anyone else in the room who would like to speak, please approach the podium, and if there's anyone on Zoom who would like to provide comments, please raise There are no hands raised.
All right. Seeing none, we'll proceed with the agenda. The next -- excuse me. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. We have before us the minutes of the May 17 meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
This is Commissioner Kurd. I move to approve the meeting minutes for May 17.
We have a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
I will second the motion.
This is Commissioner -- oh, sorry.
Commissioner Westerbeck seconds. Okay. He beat you, Commissioner Anders. There is a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the May 17 meeting. Is there any discussion around those minutes? Looking around, seeing none. All in favor of approving the minutes of the May 17 meeting? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. It is unanimous. The meetings of the -- the minutes of the May 17 meeting are approved. New business. Do you have any new business before us?
No new business this evening.
All right. Thank you. There is no new business at this point. The next item listed on the agenda is a study session, but it's been suggested by staff we move to the middle housing amendments, the thought being that might be quicker, and also there might be some folks here interested in that that would want to leave afterwards. So is there any interest in or any objections to making that change? I didn't see anything in the bylaws about needing a motion. So we will then move ahead to the middle housing amendments. I hope I didn't catch Senior Planner Boyd by surprise on that.
No.
All right. Then, Senior Planner Boyd, please lead us through.
Thank you. I'm going to -- I don't have a presentation tonight, but I'm going to share my screen. I think this will be fairly straightforward. There were just a few changes suggested to the findings in -- at last meetings at the May 19 -- May 17 meeting, and those are highlighted in the memo and also on this -- on the findings that I'm going to share here shortly, just so that you can all see that on the screen. The main issue was adding a finding number eight that addresses the environmental benefits of middle housing and other types of infill housing by preventing sprawl into surrounding natural areas. There are also a few other edits that are shown in red underlined here that were discussed at that session. And so with that, and then I guess the only other thing that I would add is that we -- I have added in the red text here at the bottom, one, exhibit number 12, which was emailed, forwarded to you this afternoon from Mark Swanson. That's exhibit number 12, and then the public testimony that we had tonight.
All right. So is there any discussion around those changes? Why don't we scroll up just a touch more there? The first change is in number seven, adding that phrase. Does that reflect the discussion? Okay. Commissioners seem satisfied with that. Okay, moving down to number eight. I think you all had an opportunity to review that. Any comments or questions? All right. Seeing none. Number nine, then? All right. Seeing no comments. So our next step would be a motion to approve the findings, conclusions, and recommendation. Is there such a motion? Commissioner Robson?
I'll make that motion to conclude.
All right. It's been moved that we approve the findings, conclusions, recommendations, and I will note there was considerable discussion at the previous meetings, which is why we're not reviewing all that. Is there a second?
Commissioner Jones, second.
All right. Second from Commissioner Jones. Any discussion around the motion?
I'll just point out that the findings include, as exhibit A, the actual comprehensive plan amendments that were discussed and agreed to last meeting, as well as all the exhibits.
Thank you, Senior Planner Boyd. Seeing no further discussion on that, ask for vote. All in favor of approving the findings, conclusions, and recommendations as amended?
Aye.
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 Okay. All in favor. So that is approved. We will forward that to the council and move on from this item. So anyone who was here for this can feel free to stay for the remainder of the meeting or can move out into this beautiful evening. And we'll let Senior Planner Boyd escape. Thanks, Dave. Good job on this. It's been a long road. So our next item is a study session on the transportation element of the comprehensive plan, and I will turn this over to staff. Take the middle.
All right. So good evening. So while Rayad sets up, I'll get us started. We'd like to discuss the transportation element of the comprehensive plan tonight, kind of exciting stuff. With us tonight is Rayad Turi. I think I introduced you to him before. He's our new transportation supervisor diving right in. We also have Carmen Quan, who's our -- with our consultant for in peer. She's the project manager for the transportation element of our com-plan update.
All right. Thank you.
Next slide.
And when you're ready.
So no action tonight. What we really want to do is introduce a lot of the process that we're going to go through tonight. We want to have a discussion, and we want to get your input on certain things. Next slide, please. Primarily what we're going to do is we're going to go over the entire, kind of the overall transportation element update process that's going to take place, that's started a few months ago, and is going to go through 23 and most of 24. We're going to introduce you to some draft transportation priorities. I think that's probably where we're spending some of our time, a lot of our time. We're going to go through -- and Carmen's going to go through multimodal level of service and introduce you to that concept. She will also go over safety and how we're going to approach that. And then Rayad will go over transportation system resiliency. So please note that while we've started work on the transportation element, we're really mostly filling you in on what we plan to do and the approach we plan to take. We're starting a lot of data gathering. We're doing preparation work and modeling and things like that, but most of the work is in front of us. We hope that we give you a good insight how we're going to approach this and how we're going to accomplish the work. And I will tell you, there's an extremely heavy lift for the transportation element in a really short time, so there's a lot to get through. So again, we're going to go through five topics. We'll stop after each topic for any questions and to kind of discuss things. If you don't mind, however, if we're spending too much time on one project, I'll probably start waving my hands. We think we have about -- we've allocated about 75 minutes to kind of get through all the topics, just to give you a little bit of context. So with that, maybe Carmen, you can start with the transportation element, the overall process.
Thanks, Steve. Next slide. Okay. So this slide is really just to show the general process at a high level of the transportation element update. As Steve mentioned, we're starting with existing and understanding planned future conditions. At the same time, we're at that little red pin there where we've been working with staff to talk through draft transportation priorities to guide the transportation element update. And Steve will provide more information on that later on in this presentation. Over the summer, we will be evaluating future land use scenarios for the city, and then until the fall, we'll be looking at identifying transportation improvement projects and prioritizing that based on available funding for them. And we will be developing a draft plan early next year and plan for council adoption late 2024. Throughout this process, we'll be -- oh, I just want to say, throughout this process, we'll be meeting with Planning Commission City Council to make sure that you guys are up to speed on what we're doing, and if you have comments about their approach, we'll take that feedback into account. And then we'll also be planning various public engagements throughout this over the next two years. In more detail, we've got little tiles here that describe the main tasks within our scope of work. There's a lot to do, and currently, we're going through a travel model refinement for the City of Bothell so that we can better represent travel within the city as we move into future land use scenarios and evaluation this summer. I think the other key item to note is that once we have a refined project list that's based on our financial assessment, we'll be going through a cost estimating and conceptual layout for them. And then this fall, we'll also be doing a transportation policy review and update. And then as part of the comprehensive plan update, we'll be drafting the transportation chapter of the environmental impact statement. Next slide. In terms of public engagement ideas, what we're planning for this summer is to develop an online webpage to inform the public about the project and also to gather feedback. That would be on the transportation priorities that we've worked on with staff on. There will also be a web map where the public can drop a pin and provide a comment on anything that relates to transportation. So mobility challenges they've identified, safety concerns they may have about a specific area or desired improvements. We'll also be informing about transportation system and resiliency, so education about existing programs and emergency evacuation routes. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Steve.
Before we dive into transportation priorities, are there any questions on the overall process or clarifications?
Commissioners? Commissioner Robson?
Thank you. I know this is probably a super detailed question for you guys, but I just quickly -- can you give me a quick overview of what -- how's a travel model devised, and what does that look like? Like, I understand vaguely what a travel model is, but can you tell me a little bit more about, are we looking strictly at accidents? Are we looking at foot traffic? Like, what does that mean?
I can share for the transportation element update, there will be multiple models that we'll be looking at. So specifically related to the future land use scenarios, we are looking at how, over the next 20 years, where growth will be allocated in the city, and part of that will be forecasting future-year traffic volumes and understanding if there are transportation improvement projects that need to address that. We also have models to evaluate traffic operations at signalized intersections across the city, and that's to meet the city's current level of service policy. And then for safety, I think we will touch on more on that later on in this presentation.
Could you give us a very high-level schedule on this? Could you give us a very high-level schedule on this?
That's where it becomes interesting. So currently, what we're trying to do is Carmen's group is trying to get the travel model together. So what we have to do is essentially use information we have to capture what the existing condition is. And then basically, that's where our land use is today, which is not as easy as you think it is. And then they calibrate it by taking actual traffic counts, which we kind of already have done, to make sure that the model kind of predicts what's actually there. And then they're ready to go and get land use alternatives. And we have a certain amount of growth that we have to accommodate by GMA. Middle housing makes things interesting because it kind of overlays everything. So we have to figure out where we think growth is going to occur over a 20-year period. And then that's the future model projections. And we have a couple of different scenarios. The land use scenarios, let's say, we want to put more growth in one area versus another area. So what do we need to do to support that? So the transportation model will help us with the vehicle side, but we're also going to make assumptions on transit because we're going to get BRT coming through, hopefully with improvements on 520, Old 527 Corridor, Bothell Way. We'll get Greens, Green Swift coming down as well, so we can make a certain amount of assumptions, how much transit use there will be. And then we'll do the same thing with bikes and Peds. So that's how everything kind of comes together. We are somewhat dependent on the land use scenarios for the future. And until we get that and kind of agree on that, we can't start running the models. So we're hoping to do that. I think it was early fall, probably start. Simultaneous to that, there's other things going on in our transportation element, which we'll go through. We're going to grab projects from different areas. So there are capacity projects. And in the multimodal world, capacity projects can be vehicle. They can be pedestrian. They can be bike. We can even touch on transit a little bit. There will be safety projects, which are not capacity projects. They're literally safety projects. There'll be resiliency projects, which Rayad will talk about. Each of those are going to be prioritized in their own section. But then there has to be overall prioritization across the board. And that's the difficult part. And that's partly why we're talking to you about prioritization and what are our priorities. So we have at least a good feel on how to start developing that prioritization. That will happen starting in fall and through the end of the year. And then that's also when we'll be doing the policy reviews and updates and coming back to you with the changes in the policies and everything. So probably kind of wrapping up early in 2024, if we're lucky, and running through the PC process, as well as the council processes, as we go through that. So by the end of 2024, we can adopt.
Thank you. Commissioner Robson?
Thank you. I know that if I keep asking questions, we're going to be here till 2024, but I, I just want to get a solid idea of the process so I can understand the information you guys give us as this plan rolls out. And again, this might be way too in the weeds for this forum, but I'm wondering, do you guys have any, are you able to calculate and include the changes that have happened with regards to COVID and how that's affecting traffic and commuting? Is that like too small of a data, um, feat, field, data set? And how do you see that? You know, I'm sure you guys could give a paper on this, but how do you see that affecting? Is that being go, are you guys considering that when you're rolling out these projects? Thank you.
I think I'm going to let Carmen try to hit the modeling aspect and then maybe Rayad talk about the safety aspect a little bit.
So I can share, in terms of COVID, you're right. There's a total change in the way some people are traveling and the number of days that they're going into the office. And that's why we are building and customizing a travel model for the city of Bothell, and we have a base year of 2023. So we've collected traffic counts last fall, where I feel like travel conditions have more normalized than they have since 2020 or 2021. And we'll be making adjustments to the travel model to calibrate it to those traffic counts. And then looking out into the future, we'll be using a similar model, but higher, but including the land use growth that we're expecting for the region and modeling that.
Yeah. So I can add just a couple of comments in regards to COVID. I've been heavily involved throughout the COVID years. Years now, actually, we're talking about traffic volumes and correlation with collisions and how did that change? Basically, right now, Bothell is about 85% of the traffic volumes, general average of all volumes throughout the city. And of course, it's dependent on which corridor you're dealing with and all of that. And of course, with COVID reductions in volumes, yeah, volumes in some cases translate into collisions, accidents, and things of this nature. And you have seen like, like in February of 2020, when everybody was like kind of a ghost town. There is no cars, there's no accidents really. And eventually, they started to pick up volumes and collisions started going up, similar trends to volumes. Again, we're not there to where we were pre-COVID conditions. And Carmen will be talking more, will have in-depth about the collision investigations that we are doing and the analysis that we're going through later into this slide presentation.
So, um, let's start with that transportation priorities. Next slide, I think. Okay. Yeah. So terminology. So one of the things that staff recognizes that can become confusing because it happens to us as well is the use of terminology. Because some terms can mean very certain, specific things, and sometimes it's very broadly. Terms are used every day, but they don't mean the same thing in the transportation world. So please let us know if you need clarification on any term. So here's a few of them to start off with. Comprehensive Plan, you guys know what this is. It's Bothell's policy document that sets forth policies for the community's future development. It's going to describe how transportation priorities, the draft that we come up with and you guys are going to look at and the council will look like, and the public will look at, how that fits in the transportation element update process. All the elements of the plan, the transportation element is just one of a lot of elements. They're all part of a whole. So the priorities may look and probably should feel kind of similar to overall plan policies. They kind of overlap each other. Keeping that in mind, Fern Pierce charged the staff to kind of draft four to six transportation priorities. It was not easy. We wound up with six, not four. I remember when you guys were looking at the vision and there was a lot of them and it's, you know. We hope you also see that they should really reflect the overall Comprehensive Plan goals. They're not anything separate. They're all kind of part of a piece of a whole. So these priorities will guide the transportation element update and help us when we have to prioritize things. So that's what prioritization metrics are. These are based on the priorities, or they will be, we have yet to develop them. It's how the project team will evaluate project ideas and as part of the transportation element to determine how the city's going to prioritize them. They will ultimately be used to help evaluate individual projects. And that's kind of the end exercise after we get through all this. Constrained project list, the key word here to me is constrained. I would also say it's not just a project list, but a program list because the manner in which we approach this matters a lot. If you go way back in time, the way it was done is, what kind of project can you build to accommodate vehicles? The way we're going to do it now is how can we get people out of vehicles so we don't have to build projects? What kind of programs can we put in place to minimize projects? So we're going to go methodically through a process. But at the end of the day, it is likely we still need projects, and then we will have to prioritize them. Constrained project list means in the 20-year period, we'll have a limited amount of resources. And so you need to prioritize. And the constrained project list is essentially would be what we can accomplish across all different, the layers that we're talking about in that 20-year period. Performance measures, in the late fall, we'll be evaluating future year land use scenarios, figuring out how to support them with the transportation system. We'll do this in a manner that helps us achieve our goals, such as looking at measures to reduce single occupancy vehicle trips first, like I talked about. Then we'll have a list of projects and programs that will, in theory, get us there and support the land use growth that we have to accommodate. Performance measures will evaluate how the city will monitor our priorities over time to ensure the full packet of projects and programs are accomplishing its goals. So as an example, when we did the sub-area plan for Canyon Park, we put a transportation demand management program in there with goals. And then we have to measure that to see and make sure we're meeting our goals. So that's the performance measures. Okay, so let's go to the six transportation priorities. Next slide, please. These are the six that we have. I can read them quickly. It's Attachment 1 in your packet. And in the packet, each of these six have like subtopics that kind of describe how, describe that topic a little bit better or that priority a little bit better. So the first one is provide a safe, efficient, multimodal transportation system that moves people and goods. Second one is ensure Bothell is a safe and desirable place to live, work, learn, visit, and play. Third one is encourage growth in Bothell in an equitable manner. Fourth one is leverage the highest value from Bothell's transportation system while minimizing environmental impacts. Fifth one is invest in growth that is smart, strategic, and sustainable. And the sixth one is develop and support a resilient transportation system. Can you put up the Attachment 1, Rayad? So again, each of these, the staff was able to come up with about three kind of a subset, so to speak, to describe.
So let's pause for a moment. Discussion around commissioners. Are you able to get that back up there? We all have it in the packet, if you've got that in front of you. Any commissioner comments on the priorities as presented? Yes, Commissioner Jones?
Thank you so much for this work. Just a couple of questions to try to understand the priorities a little bit better and how they fit, fit in with the overall work plan. So there are six priorities. Are they, okay, priority number one is more important than priority number two? Or, and I ask specifically because priority number two for, priority number three, encourage growth in Bothell in an equitable manner. I, I like how it reads. I think it captures a lot. It ties in, as you said, with some of the other work that the city is doing. It would be great to know that this range of transportation options that are accessible and affordable would be considered when you're looking at the multimodal transportation system and the highest value from the system. And so how does that all work together?
So right now, there is no priority of the six. There are six. I think once we start going through our project prioritization, just by our sheer nature of prioritization, you may want to wait them or we may want to wait them as more important than others. So certainly, that's a, that's a great discussion. I think in order to get where we need to be, first, I think if we've captured everything or we haven't stated anything that's, you know, we're not comfortable with, I think that would be great. And I think as we move along, we will probably come back to you and say, okay, now that we agree on these, what is more important than this or that? And can we wait it or whatever? I suspect it's going to be a somewhat iterative process because theoretically, what happens, and we've done this with the bike plan, is we come up with a prioritization process and we see how it falls out and everybody looks at it and goes, I didn't think it would fall out like that. And why did it fall out like that? And we explain and say, oh, well, maybe this one needs, you know. So I suspect there'd be a little bit of that going on. So I think that's a great question. But I think for now, to get through this, our first step, if we are generally in agreement that it describes the direction we want to do, if there's things to add or take out because we're concerned with it, I think we should do that. And I think we don't have time right now to probably discuss which one's more important than the other at this point.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Kur.
Hey, thanks. I really love the, the thought that went into all putting all these together. I think they're really comprehensive, which is funny because they're in the Comprehensive Plan. And one of the things that I recall from a lot of deliberation and discussion on the Planning Commission when we were discussing Canyon Park was talking about the impact of people living in proximity to arterials and how noise impacts are in addition to harmful air pollutants and the like. So I was wondering maybe for a, possibly just adding in some of that acoustic impacts as other environmental impacts could be one way to kind of tie in those discussions that we had had before. But I obviously don't know if you've been considering that elsewhere.
Would you want to limit it to acoustic or any impacts?
All impacts.
I think probably more general would be good, yeah.
Great.
Okay. Yeah. That's great.
Other commissioners? I've got two questions. One C says strive for complete streets, and complete streets is capitalized, which leads me to believe it's a defined term. What, what does that mean exactly?
We actually have a complete street program.
Okay.
I think that's why it's capitalized. Complete streets is essentially saying, don't use streets just for vehicles. Use it for other things, walking, biking, gathering, whatever other uses it can use for. It's actually a terminology that's been formalized. And in this particular sense, it's been around for a while. It's had different names. Before, it used to be context sensitive. I think now it's complete streets. And I think complete streets, in my opinion, that might be phased out a little bit. But there is still a formal program and there are still grants available to support complete streets. So it really just means that look at using streets for more than just one thing.
Well, that, that's excellent because that gets to my second comment. You know, reading through, we talk about transit, we talk about electric vehicles, we talk about single occupancy vehicles. And I'd like us, perhaps in this item on complete streets, to specifically also say the plan includes walking and cycling. I mean, those are elements of the, of the transportation plan. We've talked about them. But I think it's important to explicitly identify them.
So you want to say strive for complete streets, including walking and cycling?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Other comments? Commissioner Robson?
I really appreciate that you guys took the time to put in racial equity toolkit. I think that that's really important. I also, particularly when we talk to transportation, we need to talk about, consider those people who are disabled and might be using scooters. Particularly what I'm thinking of is the ramps off of curbs that are, can be really, really limit, you know, a disabled person's access and mobility. So if, I, I love that you guys put the racial equity in there. And I do see that it says accessible and affordable, but particularly because this is addressing mobility issues. I do think we want to pull out the idea that we want to accommodate our disabled residents or our residents with limited physical mobility because that is so often overlooked when designing transportation plans.
Commissioner Andrews?
When, when we talk about walking and, and other modes of transportation, and you've mentioned the complete streets, how is, how is that different than what we have in 1B? If we include walking, scooting, that sort of thing, under 1C, how is that different than the walking, rolling, using micro mobility in 1B? And is that, is 1B also not an equity element? Are we putting those in multiple places or is that somehow different? Is one, the, the efforts we make in 1 separate from the equity efforts that we refer to later in the priorities?
I honestly think we could probably combine the two because as I said, they're kind of saying the same thing. So we, we could combine them as well. I think one of the things that one of the staff pointed out is they would like the term complete streets in somewhere. It gives us, I mean, it's, it's another way of saying what we want to do. it's another way of saying what we want to do, but it also for purposes of opportunities for us is important. So we could certainly rewrite this such as talking about 1B and saying something like complete streets such as, and we can describe what it means that essentially is 1B. I think we could do that.
Okay, I appreciate that. I just wanted, I just wanted to know if that would somehow differ so that I'm understanding, but thank you. That makes sense.
Yeah, there's a lot of overlap. If you read some of these through there, you'll see safety a couple different ways put in. Environment sometimes is done a couple times. They kind of overlap a little bit. And it's going to be interesting because when we're doing transportation and Ryan's going to talk about resiliency, there's, there's overlap with other sections. So it gets very, you start to see that the comprehensive plan, the sections are not necessarily discrete. They're very much intertwined. So, but we'll give that a shot. I think we can try, yeah.
Commissioner Jones.
Thank you.
So, so I just wanted us to, to pay a little bit more attention to the section, to number one and this B and A. When I look at B, it seems to have two fairly important things in the same sentence. It has coordinate with transit agencies, but then it has build a connected network. Folks have different responsibilities there. The city has different responsibilities. Perhaps you do want to separate those out into a B and a C.
I'm sorry.
So if you look at number 1B,
Okay.
which is the one we were talking about,
Yep.
I'm a little worried about combining everything in 1B because it starts off by saying coordinate with transit agencies. That's a different activity than building your network within your own city. To me, they're two separate ideas.
Okay.
So I would just ask for, to just look at that a little bit more in terms of the things that everyone else is saying regarding walking, rolling, bike, you know, all of those types.
Okay. No, I think that's a great point. It depends how this is intended and we'll have to check it out.
Right.
But we can make sure transit's separate from the connected network and complete streets. I will also say, however, that you want connectivity to the transit. So sometimes there's a description of almost the same thing. In other words, you're saying, I want people to be able to walk, roll, and use micro mobility to get to the transit thing. I also want a walking, rolling, driving, micro mobility and transit network. So there's a lot of redundancy.
Absolutely, and that actually gets to my other point. So one of the words that's repeated, which I love that it's repeated, is connected in some form. You see connected throughout all of this. But I didn't quite understand how the connectivity aspect fit into the work plan that you described earlier on. So in the work plan, there's a specific section, for example, on resiliency. There's a specific section on safety. It seems as if connectivity is a pretty big element. And I was just curious as how it fit into, say, the modeling, the work plan. And it could be connectivity of the bike lane itself, bike lanes itself in terms of access throughout the city. It also could be connectivity between different modes of transportation, right?
So connectivity is a big word.
Yes.
What are you going to connect? I mean, you could say I'm going to connect my house to everything, but, you know. So we do identify things that we need to connect. In resiliency, we get a little bit more specific, Ryan. We're going to this because there is very important places that need to be connected in case of a earthquake or something like that. Unfortunately, it doesn't mean each and every one of our houses, but it could be making sure that there's mobility for certain things. So connectivity is important. I think it's a large part of just the general mobility of all modes of transportation because if you're a walker, you want a complete pedestrian facility. If there are gaps, you can't get there. And then that reflects either to whether you're either going to decide to walk or whether it's a safety issue. Same thing can be said for bikes. Same thing can be said for transit in a way. If there are gaps in transit, then the people aren't going to take that thing. So connectivity is very important. And to me, it's one of those words that can be used very specifically, but also very generally. So you will see it throughout, used in different ways as well.
Just a quick follow-up, sorry, is how are you planning to use it? Generally or specifically?
Both.
And specifically for all modes of transportation?
Yes, we are trying to get as complete a network in all different layers such that we provide options for everyone.
Commissioner Andrews, do you have another comment or is your hand left?
No, my hand should be down if not.
Okay, thank you. Just didn't want to skip over you. Other commissioners?
Thank you.
Seeing none, so did you get the feedback you were interested in on this item?
Yes, really appreciate it.
Presuming we'll see it at least another time or two.
Yep.
All right, thank you. So moving on.
So next, I think, Carmen, multimodal level of service.
So I wanted to share multimodal level of service is a topic that we started coordinating with staff on quite early on for this project. It's been known for a while that the city's focus for transportation standards have been auto-focused. And there's been a desire to be more multimodal and think about how we can provide more mobility options in the city. So how can we improve the environment for people walking, biking, and riding transit? It's also a trend that many other cities in the region have been moving towards. In terms of transportation level of service, it's the promise of how a transportation system will perform. So moving on to the next slide. As I mentioned today, the city primarily measures auto operations across the city at the corridor level. And we have found in certain areas of the city, intersections have been built out or it is not financially feasible to widen an intersection to improve vehicle operations. To address that, the city is looking at, instead of widening intersections, how can we make it better for people to use other modes? How can we make it better for people to cross the street, to bike across the street or along a corridor or to access transit? Next slide. The city's current policy recommends measuring standards for pedestrians, bicyclists, and transits. But there is no clear standard in place at this moment. And so that's something that they're looking to change in this update process. And for each mode, we can share that there are a variety of options to consider. And there are many other cities in the region who have standards that the staff are considering. So as we get closer to identifying what the city's leaning towards, we will be updating planning commission and city council. I do want to mention, related to transportation level of service is concurrency. So that's making sure that the promise of our transportation system and the operation standards we want to keep are kept. Next slide. Following the Growth Management Act, it requires cities provide facilities to maintain the stated level of service goals as development within the city occurs. As I mentioned before, traditionally, it's been much more auto-focused, but we're looking at more multimodal system for the city. As part of this, we're looking at shifting towards a system completion model. This is something that's being implemented in Olympia. It's getting implemented in Redmond, Kenmore, and Bellevue. And the idea is that with a multimodal level of service policy, you've identified a project list that improves the environment for people walking, biking, and riding transit. So you have a more diverse project list. And the system completion model means that the city is tracking the, this project list. And as it's being built over time, it's staying and keeping pace with the amount of growth in the city over time. Next slide. The last item related to multimodal level of service is transportation impact fees. So this is a method of paying for infrastructure needed to accommodate growth and to meet concurrency standards. It's a one-time charge paid by new development in the city. And these funds can be used to add capacity to the transportation network. And so with more multimodal project list, you're able to use those funds to add capacity to the system for a new sidewalk, for bicycle facilities, improving transit stops, say. We will note that transportation impact fees cannot be used to fund existing deficiencies. So it's only for capital projects that's going to provide capacity for new growth. I wanted to show here on this slide on the right-hand side, we've got the city's current transportation impact fee project list. I know it's too small, but I can just share that the majority of those projects are primarily auto-focused. And we're looking with the shift to multimodal level of service, identifying a more diverse mix of projects that are not just focused on improving vehicle operations and being able to use transportation impact fees to help fund portions of that project list. I think I've kind of summarized this. So we can go ahead to the next slide.
All right, let's, let's pause before moving to safety. Commissioners, comments on the multimodal level of service approach? Any feedback for staff? Commissioner Gustafson?
Yes, Sarah Gustafson here. I'm really excited about the different information sources that you're drawing on to put together the model. And I think we're all super curious on how it works. When you say person trips, are you tracking the beginning and endpoint of a trip and kind of overlaying them to see where the intensities are?
Yes, so I can share for the city's current transportation impact fee program, it's focused on vehicle trips. And what we're using in our model is to figure out the beginning and endpoint of a trip.
Great.
And for new development, when it comes to impact fees, depending on the size and type of development and the number of trips it will generate,
Okay.
that corresponds to the impact fee that they would be contributing to the transportation network.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jones.
I understand how impact fees work in terms of new development, but how are you, how is the city thinking about funding improvements that are needed in existing areas where there isn't new development? Because I'm, I'm thinking your modeling is going to show some areas where we do need some changes, particularly given what the past has been in terms of priorities and what the future is going to be.
I just want to clarify your question is about transportation improvement projects that are not adjacent to new development?
Correct.
Okay. So transportation impact fees do not have to fund projects that are right next to new development. It is being used to, it's a pot of money. It can be spent on any other projects that have been identified in your impact fee study.
But if I may interpret or recast the question, you did state that the impact fees can only be used for impacts associated with the new development. And I believe you will see that there are some shortcomings in the current system. So how do we plan to address those and what are the funding sources that we're looking at?
Let me take a crack.
Why don't you start?
As long as the project increases capacity and the project is not there, that's what we can use it on. As an example, well, let me use this example. Our current adopted comprehensive plan has a number of projects in them that are needed to be completed in the time period of that 2015. So by 2035, we're supposed to be complete with all those projects in order to support the growth that we assume would occur by 2035. Well, we're not at 2035 yet, so we haven't completed all the projects. We've completed quite a number of them, but there's still more projects that we would have to do, whether they're a vehicle system. We're now going to start tracking PEDs and transit and bikes to help us as well. But let's just focus on, as an example, Bothell Way. We're widening Bothell Way, which will be multimodal. We're not going to be done. So this will be one project that's still likely in our comprehensive plan, especially since we're in the middle of doing it. We don't want to just drop it in the middle. It adds capacity. In the old plan, it adds vehicle capacity. In this plan, it would add vehicle, bikes, and PED capacity. So it would be equivalent to a number of trips, so to speak. So development that is not on that roadway still would pay for that as long as it's on our transportation impact fee list. Correct me if I got something wrong there.
I, yes, I think you summarized that pretty well. I think one of the key things about the impact fee or projects is that they do have to be capital projects. That's just one thing to keep in mind.
So one thing to be, yes, so that's one thing. So as an example, Carmen's going to talk about safety. And we're going to come up with a number of safety projects. You can't use transportation impact fee for a safety project. So we will have to find other funds for safety projects, which we have done throughout Bothell's existence, so. But we will identify projects and have to find a funding source for those.
And in fact, we have used bond funding for the safe streets around schools, correct? Other commissioners? Seeing none, on to safety.
So as part of the transportation element update, we will be supporting the city in updating their current safety plan. We are looking at expanded crash history evaluation. So we're looking at both 2016 all the way through to 2022. And that is so that we can understand travel patterns that have changed before COVID and during COVID. And the evaluation, sorry, excuse me. One thing to keep in mind is we'll also be looking at the safe system approach. So the idea is that we are looking at potential, predicting based on current crash history analysis, what the high-risk factors are for crashes, and predicting where in the city may they occur in the future. And with that, what types of countermeasure projects could we suggest to mitigate, mitigate that? In terms of the safe system approach, which is the figure on the right, I just wanted to share, it's recommended from the U.S. Federal Highway Administration. It's an approach to safety, planning, design, implementation as a strategy for advancing the goal of zero fatalities and serious injuries. It's founded on the principle that people make mistakes and that the road system should be adapted to anticipate and accommodate human mistakes and our physiological and psychological limitations. It emphasizes separation of road users and space and time and the creation of redundancy in the system. So kind of the five key elements of the transportation, a safe transportation system is safe road users, safe vehicles, safe speeds, safe roadway design, and improved post-crash care. So with that, I'm open to any questions that you may have.
So comments on the scope of the safety approach. Commissioner Kur.
Thank you. I really like that graphic. It's pretty explanatory, but I'm wondering, there's some interpretation that goes into what is like a safe vehicle? And what is a safe speed? So safe vehicles, for example, we've seen a lot of like, the industry, the automotive industry shifts towards SUVs as safer vehicles. They're marketed towards like families and say, you know, your family will be safe in this large vehicle, but it's not safe for road user, other road users outside of the car. Safe roads historically have been super wide, super flat, and super straightforward. And we know that that's maybe safe for, or safe for cars to move through, but not, not necessarily safe for people interacting with the road area. And so I'm just wondering- And so I'm just wondering, how do, how does interpretation fall into these kind of safety designations and planning? What sort of principles do you found a safety plan on?
I think one thing that I wanted to share when you'd mentioned about safe roads and designs about roadways to be super straight, super wide, allow for higher speeds. One part of our process is taking a look at where crashes have occurred across the city and looking at the context of where those crashes have occurred. So has there been limited street lighting? Has there been some sort of roadside roadside obstruction, things like that? And so once those contexts, contextual factors have been identified where there's been high crash rates of serious and fatal collisions, we'll be looking across the city to see where else do those contextual characters exist. And I think that's where like the safe designs is kind of coming into play in terms of looking at what type of countermeasures could we be considering in these locations that potentially could be the locations of future serious and fatal collisions.
That makes a lot of sense, and I'm thinking back to the start of the presentation when you showed that interactive map where people can place things. I'm thinking when we were discussing the bike plan, we had the same, maybe I was up on my soapbox about crash data, and how few people report close or near misses because of, you know, process, they're not going to submit a formal, you know, document that says, I was nearly hit here, whatever. They just complain about it to their friends. And so I think that the context that you were mentioning wraps in really nicely with having a space for people to tell their story as well. So that's cool. Thanks.
So one other.
Commissioner Andrews has had her hand up.
Thank you. When you mentioned safe roads, you talked about design. Is there an element of ongoing maintenance in that, or does that fall under some other priority or component of the plan?
Can you clarify what you mean by ongoing maintenance?
So if we, hopefully, if we design a safe street, it's safe, things change over time, there are crashes, there are collisions, things will wear down. The little turtles, I don't know what we call them, in the roadways or striping may fade or whatever. So what may have been designed as a safe road may just from wear or time become less safe. Is there a component of that sort of maintenance to make sure that what we designed to be safe remains safe?
That could certainly be an element that we take into consideration just with these safety countermeasures we're proposing long-term, what type of responsibilities are they going to be to maintain that? And we can hide that in the plan as part of an expense for that project.
And one of the other things that it wraps into is sustainability, and it's not environmental sustainability, it's financial sustainability. So one of the reasons we don't want to, we're trying to reduce the amount of capital projects we do, it's because it's not just a one-time cost, it's keeping it up forever. So although it may not be inherently maintenance in the safety section of our write-up, maintenance is certainly one of the aspects we have to address overall in our system and make sure we can maintain whatever we build and have.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would like to add a couple of things in here in regards to maintenance. In our existing local road safety plan, there are some projects that call for maintenance like what we call them as raised pavement markings and edge lines, striping and things of this nature. So that is a project that is being actually in consideration in our projects. So definitely, yes. Maintenance is a direct effect to safety. Once, you know, it's assumed that we are going to maintain and sustain whatever we design, and that is a critical element for it. I also would like to address your comment about safe vehicles. You know, this is an interesting subject in here. We're traffic engineers, we're transportation engineers, planners. So we're more towards roads. We don't really have a whole lot towards the actual design of vehicles, vehicle manufacturers and all of that. But there is a little bit of coordination in between. So when we're talking about safe vehicles, you know, as you have seen in the recent years where they started implementing, you know, back in the old days, you know, seat belts is a safety measure that you have to have. Nowadays, you know, have in-line, you know, your vehicle will beep to you to say, hey, you're exceeding your lane margin, which is a safety deal or, you know, adaptive cruise control. Things are like this. They are like, maybe more like 95% plus of the collisions that are happening are because of human errors, and there are a lot of talks about, you know, adaptive and autonomous vehicles and getting rid of the source of the problem in many cases. So this is part of the issue. We can't control everything, but as traffic engineers, once Bothell becomes more of a technology leader like some other agencies are, we may be, you know, starting to think about, you know, this could be a project, you know, in the future for us is to basically start having our system, roadway system, ready for the next autonomous vehicle that will eventually just show up onto our streets in here. And how is that going to communicate between our system and the vehicle? So this is something that we're talking about, safe vehicles. Thank you.
Commissioner Robson?
Thank you. I just wanted to encourage you guys maybe to change the priorities write-up that you did to reflect some of the confusion that Commissioner Andrews and I had regarding the word sustainability. It threw me, it took a couple of read-throughs to be like, oh, they mean maintaining the road, because sustainability is such a buzzword. That when I first read that sustainability was a priority, I was like, isn't that just a repetition of the environmental protections? And I think that's number five. So I might just suggest that you guys look into maybe changing the verbiage there instead of sustainable. I'm not even, you know, trying to draft this in real time is tricky, but you guys may want to just reflect on that a little bit and clarify the difference, since sustainable is a buzzword. Thank you.
That's a great point. Thank you. Financial. I would like also to, Commissioner Kurd, designing safety, I think, is also an intent in how you approach. And my example is the multiway boulevard. When we did the access lanes, we actually went to California and looked at one that was on the ground, and we saw a couple of different examples. One of the examples had asphalt, and it was fairly wide because they wanted to make sure the cars could park and get through. And then there was another one that was still asphalt, but a little tighter and closer. And so what we finally came up with is one that has a different texture on it. It's very tight, to the point where we're getting complaints with people with SUVs. And when they call up, they, I kind of described to them, that's what we're looking for. We want it to be a pedestrian realm, we want it to be safe. And I've actually seen people walking up backwards so that cars would approach behind them, and they feel perfectly comfortable because cars are really moving slow. That is kind of their approach. I think their approach and how we go through this is very important. And I think that's as a staff, what we're trying to do here is, there isn't any one thing. It's an approach on how you look at the street. And that's another terminology for complete streets, is when you design, you're not looking at just vehicle, you're not looking at just the bike or just at the PED. When you design it, you look at the whole, because they all interact. And that's, I think, their approach we're trying to take with this. And it may come in pieces, because like, speed is a whole different animal that, I think it's one of the council priorities for us to look at the local road speed limits, which we will do. We may not have time to do it during the COM plan, but it will be probably in the policy for us to review or something like that. So I hope that the priorities that we wrote kind of show that the intent is to go through a process through the certain lens. And to me, that's probably one of the more important things that we need to do.
Other commissioner comments? Commissioner Westerbeck?
Commissioner Westerbeck. Steve, you hit on something I really wanted to get to, because I read a lot about this and traffic in this information, but it sounds like we're finally kind of understanding that the most effective thing we can do is, instead of giving people the the traditional 60s idea of forgiving roads, we're understanding like the European and other cultures' idea to put in street furniture and narrow, like multimodal lanes and so forth. It sounds like that's an approach we're starting to sort of embrace as a city, as you've explained. Because it seems like that's been a difficult one for the traffic engineering profession to embrace. But we're starting to understand that, but maybe the only way to slow people down is have it be uncomfortable to speed instead of putting up a sign that they ignore. It sounds like that's incorporated in this a little bit.
It's very counterintuitive to the traditional traffic engineering.
Yeah.
Multilway boulevards kind of opened my eyes.
Yeah.
They tend to work and they tend to not have more accidents, even though they have more conflict points.
Yeah.
And the more conflict points actually create an uncomfortable situation for drivers, which slows them down.
Right.
It's very counterintuitive.
Yeah, we're seeing that, that all thinking change, it seems like quite a bit now. And even to the point of striping less, like the guy who pioneered that in the 70s in the Netherlands and so forth, and was starting to embrace that, like, you don't see the line, so you slow down a little bit.
So the danger is, used to design this way, go all the way this way.
Right.
It's not either or.
Plus, it would take decades to shift everything over. I get that, too.
And it's driver education, it's predictability.
Yeah.
You can't have one type of road and all of a sudden a different type of road. So it's going to be, it's going to take thought, I think.
Yeah.
And if you don't see it in one area, there's probably a reason for it.
Yeah, yeah. And each one's a capital project. It's like the bike plan, we have to expect it to take quite a while and move towards a goal, but it sounds like you've incorporated that in here, which I think is what I'm happy to hear, that you're thinking that way. I love it.
Yes, and I think that's their approach. Again, that's their approach for the COM plan that I think will result us in where we want to be.
I understand. And I know you're at the beginning.
It's kind of a process, not so much the design manual, it's more the process we go through and how we think about it as we go through, I think, if that makes sense.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, process is huge, I understand. Thank you.
Other comments? There's one other element to safety, and I know it's controversial and but it's enforcement. And the example I give is stoplights. I live not too far from 28th and 527. Used to be you'd see one person on a stoplight. Now I sit there and count, and it's routine to see four people go through a red light. And I think enforcement has to somewhere come into play. And I know it brings its own whole nest of problems. Right-on red's another one. It's right-on red after stopping. And walk across Bothell Way here sometime when there's a big truck and somebody whips around that corner, people don't stop before right-on red. So there are some enforcement challenges that I think we need to look to incorporate to have a safer system. Other comments? So get some feedback there on safety? All right, resiliency.
All right, since it's my first planning commission meeting here, I'll introduce myself formally again. So good evening, my name is Raith Turhi, and I'm a transportation supervisor. And I have been with the city for four months now. Can't believe it, it's flying by. It is my honor to serve on the Bothell Comprehensive Plan Update. You're going to be hearing a lot about the term resiliency. Quite often in the next one and a half years, several comprehensive plan elements will be updated with the resiliency lens. Today's discussion, it will focus on the transportation system resiliency. So let's get started with a couple of definitions. What does resiliency mean? It's the ability to quickly recover from continuous or sudden forces. A resilient object is strong, flexible, and will bounce back to its original condition. A spring is a great example of a resilient device that deals with different forces in different directions. It can be incorporated into the design of a high-rise building foundation to make it earthquake and wind resistant. Now let's look, talk about transportation system resiliency. What does that mean to us? It is the ability of the transportation system to prepare for, withstand, and recover from disruptions caused by either natural or man-made hazards. Hazards can range between a regional natural disaster, extreme weather events, or even a collision that temporarily blocks a local road. So someone might ask, why are we incorporating resiliency in this comprehensive plan update? Well, it's basically to save lives and property. Resiliency reduces disruptions and allows the community to continue to function even in the event of a major catastrophe. There are two driving forces that require us to incorporate resiliency. The first one is related to weather, and the other one is related to our transportation infrastructure. Someone might add that collisions, which are man-made hazards, can be the third driving force for resiliency, because they can block the system and requires resiliency. Let's talk about the weather. There is a demand to deal with the impacts resulting from extreme weather events such as snow and ice, and I'll let you read the words behind each one of those. Rain, earthquakes, wind, and heat. Unfortunately, our transportation system has vulnerable points to the hazards that we just mentioned. Therefore, we want to assure that it meets the demands of these hazards and it has the current safety standards. We won't be able to upgrade the entire system all at once. However, we will focus on vulnerable points along our emergency response routes. Eventually, we will end up with a resilient transportation system that provides for a safe, equitable, redundant, and efficient movement of people, emergency vehicles, and resources. So how do we get there? So what's the process that gets us there? We have already looked at a literature review. We continue to coordinate with internal emergency management and external advisory focus groups that we have already formed. We will plug into the public engagement process that Carmen has mentioned before. We'll continue, we'll identify any new vulnerabilities that we have not been discussed before. And finally, we will identify projects, set priorities, and at the end of the day, hopefully, we will be able to provide a prioritized project list. And that concludes it for resiliency. I'll be open for any of the questions that you may have.
Commissioners' questions, comments? Commissioner Kurd?
Thanks. I'm thinking about how, you know, transit, we take current levels of transit kind of for granted. And that, you know, bus routes can come and go based on regional decision-makers and regional funding levels and so forth. How does resiliency within Bothell for transit? Like, what decisions do we have at the city level for resilient transit?
So when it comes to resiliency in terms of like major events that are happening, I'm just going to connect it with transit. That's what I was thinking about. Maybe we can clarify that a little bit more. But in case of a catastrophe that is happening or a need for evacuation, you know, wildfires are coming to Bothell, everybody needs to leave, we can't just drop all of us, drive our vehicles. We could utilize transit. leave. We can't just drop all of us, drop our vehicles. We could utilize transit at certain locations to take people out of town so that we are not gridlocking the system and we're getting people out of town quickly. We could use, for example, the North Shore School District. And that is actually a strategy that is already in our hazard mitigation plan annex that was developed back in 2019 in AICOM. In terms of resiliency to transit, I'm not so sure I answered your question, or is there a different aspect of it?
No, it makes sense that we would depend on high-capacity systems to move lots of people. But my question is maybe leading on a little bit. A man-made disaster could be that transit funding is cut. What happens here in Bothell? What decisions can we make now to make ourselves resilient to decisions that are made outside of our control, specifically in terms of transit, but maybe wider than that?
Yeah, there is a layer that we are, as part of our multimodal, you know, there is a layer to talk about transit, you know, and how are we going to have a good, reliable system? If that fails now, what are our other options, I think, is your question. I'm not so sure how to answer that.
I think that's where resiliency, the definition, can be quite broad. So your terminology for resiliency for transit, the transit, transportation system is a little more focused in terms of keeping transit and keeping services available. To us, that's one of our layers, and that would be one of our probably guidelines. The tricky part with transit is we don't fund transit, like you know, and we are kind of at the mercy of the three transit agencies. But it is really much a partnership. They need reliable, predictable service. And so if we don't keep up our, unfortunately, our vehicular system, which they use the transit, and it's not reliable, then they will struggle and they won't get ridership. And because they don't get ridership, it's not a sustainable route financially. So those are some of the things from a priority point of view in our level of service when we talk about transit that we have to talk about. It might wind up being things like advocacy, making sure, like I think Bellevue has identified certain travel time from point A to point B. So transit has predictability. Those are the things, access to transit routes, even land use. If we do land use correctly and we're above a threshold that supports transit, if it's not dense enough, they have a hard time that there's just, you know, the bus is this small, is the smallest they can get. And if it's a quarter full because there's just no density there, they can't sustain that route. So things like that will help us keep transit. But in a situation like COVID, I'm not sure what we're going to do either. I think that's a longer discussion that perhaps we would have to talk about.
No, you've answered my question. Thank you. Yeah.
Commissioner Jones.
I would just offer the thought that it's actually really exciting to see the city of Bothell head towards a more multimodal system because I think that itself provides some resiliency, especially if connectivity, going back to that word that I love, is there for, throughout the network. And so I do think that if we could optimize this approach, it actually provides a sense of resiliency for the city. So that's really exciting. Regarding resiliency, is there, are we aware of funding opportunities, grants, those types of things to support resiliency? And I'm thinking particularly in terms of, we've seen the state provide some funding for, say, wildfires and some community responses and things like that. I don't know if it plays into the transportation networks, for example. It's when we think about wildfires, when we think about earthquake potential. Is the state funding some of these improvements?
I think yes. There's been funding. Bridges are typically vulnerability. And we've actually seismically retrofitted three of ours via federal grants. There, I think there are some flood grants out there. They're kind of disguised as stormwater, surface water kind of grants, but there are things we can grab there as well. So I think with, I think with the federal government's recognition of the climate and what it's doing, there are more opportunities available than there were before. But there have been some opportunities traditionally, and we have tried to take advantage of them.
Other commissioners?
So is it safe to assume that your approach does look at high-priority facilities, you know, fire stations, medical facilities? I look at Riverside Drive with all the senior housing that clearly has need for emergency access and prioritize those for maintaining access through events?
Yeah, definitely, 100%. We do have a couple of plans in existence. You know, one of them is the, as I indicated, the Hazard Mitigation Plan, that is called the Annex, which is taken from the King County, where there is over 60 partners gather together. And they did their own plan for King County, and Bothell was responsible, and there was a public process to get all of that done. In that plan, you can see some graphics and maps, you know, population, schools, emergency response facilities, like police and fire, things of this nature, definitely, you know. And so one of our work that will be done is to assure, number one, you know, that with the changes in land use, for example, that could be happening in Bothell and here, you know, when putting more population in certain areas, for example, want to make sure that the emergency response routes will account for that. So that is an equity lens within resiliency. We're going to look at community centers. We're going to look at, you know, again, resiliency is a really big term in here, and this falls more into the other parts other than transportation. But because I, there is nothing for me to do in extreme heat and weather conditions. You're going to be hearing that from, and another consultant will be talking about climate and things like that in the next few weeks in here. But possibly, you know, community centers, you know, in extreme heat conditions that they could open their doors, for example, for people to come in and get cooling centers or air purification in case of wildfires and smoke and all of that. This is something that has been talked about and will be discussed. So as I said, you know, you're going to be hearing the term resiliency for the next one and a half years, you know, so.
Great, thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Gustafson?
Thank you. Sarah Gustafson here. My question is, to what extent does the safety plan overlap with the bike plan? For example, in drawing data from the bike plan, the bike plan has several years' worth of data of people pointing out which intersections are unsafe. And I'm wondering if we can somehow feed that into the wonderful dropped pin feature of the safety plan.
We can certainly see, so we wouldn't be redoing what was done in the bike plan and that public engagement process because I know that was an extensive process that the city had went through with the community. We will be building on top of that to see, you know, what kind of new comments are we gathering from the public in this case? And we can try to see how it overlaps with feedback from the bike plan and in terms of potential projects identified, making sure that we're not repeating things. Does that make sense?
I think so. It's a bit that, it's a little, it sounds like it would be too hard to draw the data directly and feed it into the system, but instead you would compare the output more. You would compare the projects and see where the overlap is and where there might be something that is a priority for both.
Yes.
Okay, so that gives you something to work on? Okay, anything else on this item, study session?
I can wrap up. So our next immediate steps are, we're going to go and talk to the council on June 27th, pretty much the same thing. But we probably will talk to them about the feedback you gave us as well. It won't be in their agenda bill. It's too early. We'll get it in our discussion. And then we'll probably be coming back to you on July 5th. And the discussion primarily would be, I think, starting the discussion on how we're going to prioritize overall, again, process, how we're going to do things. We probably might come back a little bit and talk to you about multimodal level of service, MMLOS, if you guys remember that terminology, it'd be easier. Staff is moving along. We're not quite there, but I think by that time, we should be able to come and tell you where we're leaning for everything. And you guys can kind of see the direction we're kind of moving in. And I appreciate your input. It really helps. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. I see the screen froze again. We have an odd message about the mic working, so I hope our technology is okay. But thank you for that presentation. It was very interesting. I think you really engaged us. We look forward to hearing from you some more on this. So, thank you. So moving along, our next item is reports from staff.
Sorry, now I'm realizing sitting over here is really awkward for reports from staff. So first off, we're not sure why the screen is frozen, but apparently there's not anything we can do about it. So we'll just see when it kicks back in. I'll keep the report really quick tonight. So there is a study session on middle housing scheduled at city council on June 13th. Last night, there was a public hearing, or two public hearings at city council, one on the transfer of development rights program and one on outdoor dining. City council will make final action on June 13th as well. We are continuing to work on the engagement plan for, or the, working on engagement for the comprehensive plan this summer. So we'll be attending some of the Bothell Summer Nights events, Sustainamania. And then we're also working on our portal. I think Commissioner Jones asked us something along the lines of what makes Bothell unique. And so we're going to use that theme to kind of talk to the community about what they think is so special about Bothell and making sure that we capture that in our plan. So we're really excited about that. We're also bringing on an intern from the University of Washington Bothell. So we're really excited to have someone joining us from our local university. And then also keep an eye on your mail. There's an article on the comprehensive plan going out in a mailer to all Bothell residents. So lots of things going on, probably lots of things I'm also forgetting. But those are the big things that are coming up. And if you have any questions, please, please ask.
So there was some discussion about future meetings. Are we seeing the course on our planned schedule at this point?
Yes, more people were available on July 5th than we thought. So we're going to keep that date instead of pushing it back since I think there were actually more people available on July 5th than July 12th.
All right, good. Thank you. Reports from members. Anyone have comments you'd like to share? Mr. Jones?
I just want to say that there was a fantastic block party on Saturday, if anyone was able to attend.
Thank you. I'll just say, I spent, I don't know, about 12 days traveling in Sicily, and the pedestrian streets are the highlight. You know, the restaurants, the activity, the just spilling out onto the streets, the interactions. It's certainly something to strive for. So I'm glad that we've taken a small step in that direction. And again, it's exciting to see. Any other comments from members? Seeing none, anything to report to council? I don't think we have anything new. With that, there being no further business, is there a motion to adjourn?
This is Commissioner Kurd, so moved.
Second. Commissioner Gustafson?
Sarah Gustafson, a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, it is unanimous. We are adjourned at 7:46. And our next meeting will be June 21st. So, thank you all.